To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The engineer requested that item four on the consent agenda be removed.
Routine looking agenda.
There was one thing I was gonna ask them on. So, we have the, we have planning update at 1:30. We have a discussion in the infrastructure priority funding with Mike at 3:00. This, this morning, we don't have, you know, a lot going on this morning. Uh, well, I guess we got the legislative updates at 9:30, 10:30.
Which typically only goes about thirty minutes, right?
Yeah. So, I was wondering if we could, because I don't know how long Pete's, you know, uh, her, um, update's gonna go. That's an hour and a half for her update to get to 3:00. I just wanted, if we wanted to try to move Mike up this morning sometime.
She, she has district use chart on her agenda, re-adoption ordinance.
I don't see if I'm moving Mike up.
Maybe to, to, um, like ten o'clock?
Yeah.
Cause we got, we usually only go half an hour for Pops and Associates, right?
And he probably won't take much more than half an hour of Mike, so.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Can we ask, let's, could we ask him before we change it that way?
Yeah.
No, for sure.
Yep, you wanna do that?
I'll email him right now.
Okay. That would work. Just, just as long as we keep Pete at direct time, cause everybody's interested in.
Yeah, no, I'm not. I'm not, I'm not. There's not enough time, but I was just thinking, you know, that just kinda stretches us out if that's all we're doing.
Yep.
It's pretty good.
See, wait, see what happens with Mike and then we can.
Okay. Do you want to discuss some stuff while she's trying to get over?
Sure.
So, I had a meeting where, I had a couple different meetings. Um, the meeting with, um, with maintenance, which Laney was there, uh, Joe was there, Kyle was there. And then Naomi was there. And, um, you know, it was basically just a meeting of the fact that I had heard some, you know, there was some, just some issues, I think, going on. You know, between what maintenance needed and what, what the fairground, what Naomi felt the fairgrounds needed and some of that. After we resolved, kinda discussed what was going on. I think that we had good, we just figured that it was lack of communication basically. It was just lack of people getting together, so. So, Naomi and Joe and Kyle are gonna get together on Mondays. To discuss projects. And within that, I told Joe, cause I think there's a little bit of a, um, I think Joe's always concerned about his budget, which I think is good. But I told him, I said, if there are projects over there, like, we just need to know, we need to know how much they cost. So, we can understand if we can allocate money to those certain projects. Right? Because I said, the way that I look at a budget is, your normal operating budget is your normal operating budget. Right? It doesn't take into account things that might arise like this, this fixing of the, uh, I forget which budget, I apologize, but it's.
I get, I get where you're going.
Yeah. So, I said, you know, I said, those are out of your, those are, those are not contained within your budget. So, what we need to do is just know how much the money, how much those do cost. And then see if we wanna do those as a project. And then, uh, and then I am meeting with Naomi and Joe on Fridays. So that I know what's going on, so I can report back. To try to keep some of that, um, cause it seems like the, the fairgrounds takes the longest time out of staff. Right? And really, we should probably be allocating more time to some other stuff.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, and so I'm gonna, but, I did tell them, I said, look, there's a point. And, and I'm pretty good at knowing that point. About where I can say, yeah, I think that's a good idea, or yeah, this is my opinion on that. Versus, no, that has to come to the board.
Well, I, I think that's great. It's, uh, that communication is what it is and, uh, everybody understanding each other's roles and how things proceed. I was, uh, I, I knew that was coming and I knew you were meeting with him, so I thought maybe that would be the time to, that you would get things kinda squared away. And that's great, because we do spend a lot of time here on some of the, getting in the weeds and some of that stuff that. And you know, there, it, it gives people the impression, including myself, that the fair is more important and everything.
I know. And, and that's the one other thing that I told Naomi was, I said, you have a lot of great ideas for those fairgrounds. And I am really, you know, all of us are, we want to, you know, I, from everything that we've ever talked about, we all want to maintain the public lands and buildings. Yeah. Right? But I said, we can't go out and spend a hundred thousand dollars down at the fairgrounds and then be shirking, you know, the, the scanning of important documents that, you know, because people can see that, but people can't see that over there. And that's where, you know, e- even though, you know, that could be more important.
There's always those trade-offs that happen.
Right.
Yep. No, that's great, I'm glad to hear that.
And then, I had a meeting with Chuck Brushwood from the Toldo Thieves, Greg Knott, Mike Ford. On, so we have that water quality fund. And just trying to get some ideas about how the county could utilize that funding to make sure that we are doing our due diligence with water quality. As it relates to, and I, I told him, I said, any projects that we do, hopefully they tie in with, um, cause Chuck was there, because he, you know, obviously they're trying to get, well, obviously, they're trying to get EDT better equipped up in the MetLife. Cause it's really just in the open noggin right now, as far as the data, that data that they've collected. So, um.
Might say what that is, I don't know.
EDT?
Yes.
Is, uh, they had to remind me what it was. In, something diagnostic tool.
Yeah, so that.
What ecosystem diagnostic tool, I believe?
And it's used to achieve a net ecological benefit?
Well, no, so, interestingly enough, the people, oh, Rob Crammett was on the phone too. Rob has been doing a lot of water quality studies up in the MetLife, where, how it relates to fish. But, interestingly enough, they knew about EDT, but they knew it as, that it did something else. And they were pretty surprised when Chuck told them about how we used it for an analytical tool in the Water 49.
That's what it is, right?
Um, I think originally, no, I don't think it was. I, I, kind of, but I think it was not used in the manner that, that we used it for in Water 49. Where we looked at the, what the outside, um, uh, well, how an outside influence could, could impact the, the fish, basically. And I don't think it was used, I don't think it was originally intended for that, but they've, they've made so many, you know, increases in the technology, but I think it can be. So, anyway, I, we talked about that, and we're trying to get, work through some stuff about, cause I told them that, said, the county, as far as that money goes, that should look at, um, basically land use impacts to water quality. So, because that's what I think of that money was originally designed for. Right?
I think so.
So, it's not necessarily, um, you know, I think you could tie it in with, you know, structure along the river and shading and what that does, um, you know, as far as the, uh, our shoreline's act, right? But I think the majority of it is, how does the, you know, what's the growing population doing impacting water quality? Whether it's sediment, um, you know, uh, uh, nitrate levels, you know, things like that.
Do they know about the water quality up in the MetLife? How does it permit, how do they know?
They actually know a lot about it, and if everybody could tie in all their information, that's another thing that we could do too. As part of the scope, is to first off, tie in all the information. Because if you think about it, we have all of the group being group A well systems in the MetLife being monitored. So, we have Department of Health, have all of their information that probably nobody uses except for the Department of Health on a singular basis. Not as a, you know, not to go, oh, look, here's a, here's a pattern. Then, Department of Ecology, I guess, does water quality studies all the time at that, that I didn't even realize. They have thermal imaging of the river. That they did in Flu in '09. And they, we were talking about the cold water, uh, refugia. It, I think that's how you.
Right.
Cold water refugia. Yeah. Is really critical, and how can you determine, like, basically they took a thermal image, found these cold sinks, go out and on the ground, truth them, and then go, okay, these, how can we protect these, this cold water coming in? You know, like, A mile was brought up, that it's really cold water coming in really low in the system. It's really important, but that water stays cold.
Cause you're less likely to influence the temperature, ambient temp, it goes with ambient temperature in the river. They were typically in the open noggin, I don't know.
Well, that's what, that's what Rob was saying, was that, that shading doesn't cool the river down. It keeps it at a temperature. Because ambient air temperature is, was more of an influence. And then if you were to increase the ambient, if you were to take the ambient air temperature and then direct sunlight on it, you're gonna heat it up. If you can keep it shaded, it's, it's just the ambient air temperature, you know, heating the surface of the water.
Shade even, true.
By keeping the water cooler from direct sunlight. Or not, but not cooling it down. Keeping it from heating up. Is what it says.
So, they, uh, do they have any listings, federal listings in the 303 listings there? That, that was the determinant of, you know, water quality. When we first did the study here in the open noggin, it was, what we were addressing was the federal listings where we exceeded, um, parameters of the, um.
You know, that's a really good question, and I don't know. I've never heard that we exceed any of those, um, nothing.
Cause temperatures included in it, you know, and a variety of other.
Arsenic. Yeah. That could be one where a point source stuff, you know, like that with the, the red, uh, red shirt line.
So, yeah, so there'll be, they have a natural background and then they have, um, you know, that typically exists in this region. A natural background of the arsenic. And then there's the, what do they call it? The old contributors that are no longer there, but they're still in the system.
Yep. Well, hold on just a second. So, I bet you anything. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
At ten o'clock, we have negotiations, yeah?
Right, but we talked about meeting before.
Yep.
That kinda messed up the proposed agenda changes.
That did.
Well, cancel that.
Yeah, ten to noon. So, what do I, what do we have? One side of update, Pop and Associates review. Well, okay, the resolution on the tri-county interlocal agreement.
Yep.
Um, when I'm, uh.
I'm hoping to get that moving on.
Yeah, so, at 10:30, I'll set a alarm for 10:30, I'll come back down here. With that.
Yep, okay.
And then, well, 11:30, okay, so, did you read the update on the TV district from George?
Let's see, I think I already read it, you've been juggling when it came.
Go ahead, go ahead. So, so we talked about up to fifty thousand dollars enough for the TV district. And I thought that we talked about it coming out of the infrastructure, the point oh nine dollars as a, um.
Emerging opportunity?
Emerging opportunity, exactly. But I don't know if Ronnie has been brought into that conversation or not.
Yeah.
Now they're asking about this, about the money. Already. So, I think that we, we should probably.
There has to be an application made to the infrastructure.
Right, exactly. So, I think we should, we need to have to bring Ronnie into this, and maybe if, if somebody could write her an email and ask her if she could join us at 11:30. I apologize that I spaced out on our negotiations. But I'll come back down at 10:30. And, uh, if you need me for that 11:30, I just, I assumed we had to go through a process with that money.
We do.
Yeah.
You got meeting, union right now?
Yeah.
Okay, before you go. Tomorrow, RC number four, did award hold ninety seven?
We're, we already, um, Josh pulled it.
Okay.
Josh pulled that from the consent agenda.
Okay.
So, we're not.
Because I talked to, uh, the representative for Bush, to get the bid. And what it was, it was one of the girls in the office, yelling out just the ancillary stuff. And she wrote on one sheet, you can write Mo, but on the other one, you're not supposed to. She wrote Mo on both sheets, and they're gonna, they want to throw it out because this secretary, actually, they typed Mo on the wrong sheet. It cost the tech, there's, what, fourteen thousand dollars? D, D, DOT is the one that did it.
DOT threw it out?
Yeah. And I think, I think the engineer has the authority to look at that and say, that's like a scripter's error.
Well, but, I, I, all I know is Josh took it off, they're trying to resolve it.
Yeah.
And that's all I know about it, other than what you just said. So, um, I guess if she's gonna get feed tomorrow, we'll probably know.
Yeah.
About this stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just wait to hear from him, and then we took it out the agenda system.
Yeah.
Uh, do you want me to email Ronnie?
Well, I mean, that's.
I'll, I'll give her a call.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah. I just, I think that, that we talked about it coming out of there, and then all of a sudden now, we're being asked for the money, and that's not in the process, so.
But, um, just a, just a thought here. Is that, um, I don't know what she's been telling us that we don't already know.
I, I would, I would like to just hear from her to say, do you think this is a, an emerging opportunity? Do you think this is something that would be, you know, considered in these point oh nine dollars? That's what I would.
He's asked me that. I'm on that same committee, the executive committee that.
Oh, okay.
Teams.
Well.
To decide whether or not it's an emerging opportunity.
Oh. I'm sorry, Chris.
I'm the chairman now.
So, so does that fit with an emerging opportunity for infrastructure?
Well, here's the way it has gone in the past, is that emerging opportunities most commonly, and I joked about this for years, turns into emerging issues, or emergence, emergen.
Emergencies?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, it's, it kinda converts that language around a little bit, and say it's emerging opportunity to help keep a piece of infrastructure in place, and oftentimes that's what happened. Or, uh, Tenasket, for instance, was at one time short dollars to finish a project, a street project. And all of a sudden, this thing came up and it affected their ability to actually finish their infrastructure project.
Right.
So, we called that an emerging opportunity. Same thing, that's how, how that stampede, I really, actually brought in this whole payment program, same thing.
Okay.
So, my answer is yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then, then.
But it's that committee that has to then decide whether or not, it's just, it's a two-week turnaround, Alan.
Then, then, I don't know that I need to be here, because you can explain a lot more to George about the fact that the TV district needs to apply.
She just, yep.
For an emerging, emerging opportunity to the infrastructure fund.
Yeah.
And then, you know, obviously, if that gets denied, which hopefully it doesn't, because I think it is a good infrastructure opportunity.
Yeah.
Then we can look at, you know, find that something else.
Yeah, okay. Um, we have a meeting of the, um, executive, uh, committee of the board here real soon, in way. So, we could probably do it at the same time. Hope. Looking for all the counties, and they're trying to keep a balance there too. Some of the counties on the west side might want to see those bills go through too, so. We had some pretty good discussion on Friday with that, but boy, I'll tell you what, we spent a lot of time on that health bill. So, we didn't get a chance to really touch on it. I mean, it's hour and a half meeting. And, uh, we got through as much as we could, but with criminal justice bills, uh, we got to talk about some, but she was going real fast. But I don't know, we got, we got some good lobbyists there, they seem to do their job.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that. Yeah.
Then there was several growth management bills that don't affect this. That went through, are going through, looks like. But even in those, WASAC, or WASAC has been able to slow some of that stuff down. Some, for it's reasonable for the, for the counties over there that are planning, or everywhere that are planning under the act. But like I say, you know, there's very few changes there that is affecting us. But we'll see what these guys have to say. But we're, uh, there's a draft resolution that the Douglas and Chelan County had. It's a Chelan County resolution for the pest control. And then that contract's been gone through several times, so they're wondering if we were gonna, I thought we were in a position to go forward with it. Um, I had a meeting, you know, and had Will on the line, and he, uh, explained a lot of what they've changed. And actually, Douglas County had a couple changes, so. This process actually has made that bill work a little bit better.
I had scheduled time. Are we moving that, uh?
Which?
For the tri-county resolution and agreement?
Um, no, because of that meeting that, uh, realized he had to go to.
Well, we're not, we're not moving that discussion up?
Um, Will? We were gonna move it to ten, and he's got a meeting at ten. And he was gonna come back at 10:30 for the TV district for that short period.
Eleven, oh, well, we have a, the TV district at 11:30.
Oh, I mean.
And we have the discussion on the resolution of tri-county.
Yeah, he was, he said he was gonna come back in for that, but he's got a meeting at ten.
Okay.
So, we were gonna move Mike up to ten? He's got a meeting.
I've got an email to Mike, asking if.
Yeah, you might wanna, you might wanna change that, because that's why he just left, is he had a free meeting before the ten o'clock meeting.
We got Zach waiting.
Well, good morning.
Hi, Zach.
What are Zach?
How we doing today?
Good.
It's Monday and a nice day.
Yeah.
You know, I'll tell you what, every day you're looking at the grass from the top side is a nice day.
There you go. Well, you can actually see something now.
Yeah. Oh, good.
Yeah.
Oh, well, so it's been an interesting go here. Of course, you guys have been watching. Uh, some stuff that I think it's important to mention here, uh, and I will kinda be a little bit redundant on what I sent out in the, uh, in the email. But there's been quite a bit of question coming around, you know, what these judicial changes, you know, the judiciary, whether it's sentencing and all that, or, or just how they're doing stuff, resentencing. And really, that's been overshadowed by the Supreme Court's decision to basically declare our possession of illegal drugs law a unconstitutional law, and let everybody out that had just a possession charge. Obviously, that has kind of put a new spin on things, and some of the legislators are stepping back going, well, now, hold on just a minute. That might not be the best thing, maybe we should rethink what we're doing. Well, they're really kinda going back to the drawing board, it sounds like. However, my, but on that is, as we've heard from OFM several times this year, and over and over and over again, I guess, really, they're kind of just guessing on the fiscal notes. So, the fiscal impacts of a lot of these different policies, cause they really don't know. Part of the reason for that is, we're getting into some, I call it uncharted territory here in terms of some of the more progressive policies that are being put out there. And part of what we've got is, is they might feel good socially, you know, but do they actually do good? And then, number two, there's such a, a big change that we're talking about here, that part of the question really is, what impact is this really gonna have in terms of your day-to-day business? You know, and how you conduct yourselves, and how your sheriffs, police, jailers, judges, you know, whatever it might be, uh, conducts their, their duties on a daily basis. And so, a lot of the question comes in here. And what I think is a really good exercise, and Juliana Rowe has been working on it a little bit too, with some of the prosecutors. On some of these bills, I mean, if there's something that, that we think is especially onerous or costly to us, it might be worth the time to actually come through and put out a, or, or at least volunteer a fiscal impact statement for your county, or for your judges, prosecutors, whatever, whatever the, the subject matter is. And, you know, that won't be in vain or futile effort, because, you know, all these bills that, maybe if they set them down this year, you know, yeah, the political environment might change a little next year, they'd be coming into some elections and things like that. But all these bills are gonna come back in their original form. And so, we're gonna have to deal with it again next year, and, and I, I just have this feeling that OFM isn't gonna have any better idea next year on the fiscal note than they are this year. I think that in, in terms of putting that stuff together, it's worth assembling, you know, if we see something that's a glaring concern, number one. And number two, I think it's worth sharing with the sponsors of the bills and the different chairs of the fiscal committees. And if it goes to a policy committee, I think it's important to make sure that the policy committee members know. And I know that's pretty basic, like, general stuff, um, but what we're seeing, and kind of, you know, I think WASAC has done a fantastic job in how they're conducting their steering committee meetings lately, you know, with having speakers and then having the meeting. There's been a lot of good information shared with the steering committee, and I, I think overall, you know, and, and it's nothing nefarious by any means, I think overall though, at the state level, the policy staff, um, even the legal staff and different things like that, and legislators themselves, you know, they're really doing the best they can with what they have. And they're being asked to put, for example, a fiscal note together on something that they have no. And they're being asked to put, for example, a fiscal note together on something that they have no experience or no background or no understanding. So it really comes down and impacts us out in the rural areas because, you know, Olympia is obviously on the west side and a lot of the people that want to work in Olympia have, you know, political aspirations and possibly most likely from the west side. You know, and, and there's a very likely possibility that in some of these agencies, very few of the people have even been to eastern Washington and even been to Spokane, right? So they just don't understand. So I think anything that we can do to help them out, uh, help educate, not even, you know, saying, hey, this is a terrible bill. It's going to just destroy our economy, which it may very well do. But, you know, I, I think it's important just to share with them, say, hey, you know, while this might work for King County or Pierce, Nahomish, Thurston County, whatever it might be, it really isn't applicable and actually goes in the wrong direction for, you know, Ferry, Okanagan, Stevens County, you know, whatever it might be, any of these rural counties. So Whitman, whatever, name it, you know? Um, because things don't impact us in the same ways. And a lot of these, as we've talked before, you know, with the criminal justice stuff, especially as they start messing around with the tools that we give our officers or the tools that our officers have available to them. Um, no, we talked about it before, you know, one of your deputies may be thirty minutes to an hour from any sort of backup or help. And that really kind of puts us in a, a bind. I mean, safety concerns legally, all that stuff. So, I mean, this is just stuff that I think they need to know. Um, on another, oh, and that, that's on a case by case basis, obviously. On another note, um, as we go into the second half of session here, we are actually past halfway. It's a good point to celebrate. Um, as we go into the second half, a lot of the bills that came to the floor are substantially different from what they were when they came out of committee. I mean, and some of them have full striking amendments. So it's a whole bill is different. So when we come into the second half of session here, and we've talked about it before, we know that WAC in order to stay at the table, uh, WAC and staff and, and their contract lobbyists basically have to come in and, and a pretty neutral, you know, okay, we don't like this bill, but here's our concerns. They testify with concerns and it could be, yeah, we're concerned about the bill passing. We really don't want it to, but it's concerns. We've heard, uh, numerous occasions that our, uh, Republican legislators really need us to kind of stand up in committee and, and really voice that opposing opinion if we have it. And that gives them a lot more leverage both in committee and then after it comes out of maybe a policy committee goes to a fiscal committee and then eventually the floor conversations. It gives them more, more ammo and more political, uh, capital to be able to come and stand up against some of these things. So what I'm going to propose is, you know, we, we kind of take our cue from, from WAC and, and, you know, obviously if they're going to testify, I guess with concerns or, or something like that, and it's something that you guys really don't like. I'm going to suggest that we actually all, and that's myself included, come and sign in to this legislation and, and submit some testimony, even if it's a couple of lines. You know, it doesn't really matter, but I think it would be really important for us to get our opinion registered at least in, in the opposition of, of some of this legislation that really even the compromises aren't good for us. Uh, just, just so that we actually have that on record because so far there's been a, a little bit of, of, you know, that negative registered, you know, that con opinion. Um, but we just, I think we need a little bit more. We need to make sure for sure that the, there's no one understand that you guys down on the local level about as close as we're going to get to the people, um, where you really get to implement this stuff are not in favor of this, you know, whatever the bill might be. So that's going to be my, my suggestion here for the next, uh, next little iteration. You know, from, I guess tomorrow is the cutoff, or no, hold on today. Is today Tuesday? No, today's Monday. Sorry. Been a week already and we're only like four hours into it, right?
Right. It's so fast, right?
It, it really does.
Um, you know, just as something to comment, Zach, is that, um, you know, not just us in eastern Washington, but there's several rural counties on the other side.
Oh, definitely.
And, yeah, in the same mode of thinking. So, uh, just to, just to note that, I mean, you know, you can make your rounds all the way around the, the, uh, outside the Peget Sound area and even some that are in the Peget Sound area have a lot of rural concerns. And so, you know, including, oh, you get down around the southwest part of the state and, uh, those guys down there are about as rural as ever.
Yeah.
So they, they also, they're at the table too and, and, uh, and through the WAC, I think we, we're, we're letting that be known. I've testified on a couple. Um, we also followed up on that DNR bill.
Okay.
Yeah, um, contacted legislators and, uh, uh, you know, the, um, the, uh, leadership in the senate on that. Um, so yeah, so, you know, prepared to do that. I did that through Paul Jewell and, you know, he put out an APB, you know, and
Absolutely.
A lot of people, yeah, yeah.
Well, and that's, that's where, you know, WAC is a real benefit, you know, and, and to your comment on the, you know, the rural side of western Washington, a majority, vast majority of King County is rural and people forget it.
Yeah.
Now, I, I guarantee you Kathy Lambert doesn't forget it, but she gets.
She reminds us all the time.
Oh, she reminds you, yes.
Yeah.
You know, so you're not alone. You're, you're really not alone. And so, uh, it's really, it's kind of one of those situations that we're in right now where we know that a lot of this stuff, it's kind of like that train's coming and there's not a lot we can do to stop it with our little BB gun we got out here. Uh, but you know, uh, we're, we're at least going to let them know that we're displeased and, you know, that way when this stuff comes back around, because it will have to. When it, you, you say, well, we opposed you on the first shot. You want to listen to us now. So, um, but I, I, and I think you guys have been doing a fantastic job on that. Uh, I, I do think that we're going to have to basically look at all these bills again as if they were new. Uh, because there's been a lot of, you know, a lot of conversations, a lot of negotiations, just, uh, learning on the legislators, uh, side of things, you know, and the other thing we're up against, you know, there's a lot of new legislators. Um, and, and it's, it's really interesting, you know, number one, uh, they're relatively uneducated because they haven't been in the system. They might be very, very educated, but I guess educated in how, you know, what it's like to be in the legislature and all that. Um, but part of what we're, we've actually heard a couple of times, well, you know, this new legislator sponsored this bill and we really want that person to get a win. And this is the only bill they sponsored. And, you know, we're kind of sitting back going, well, yeah, but it's a crappy bill. They want to win, but come on, man.
That's the history of both the legislatures and Congress, uh, in my readings is that, yeah, somebody comes in and they're trying to move them up in the system. So they're trying to look for something that they want to do for their district and to help them do it. But yeah, you're right. A lot of times that they're not, they're not quite the legislation you'd like to see.
Oh, yes. You know, I mean, maybe, maybe you should give those, the new legislators that you really want something to pass, you know, something innocuous like the, the tone of the color that they use on the yellow stripe in the middle of the road or something. I mean, it's perfect. Change it. I don't care.
Even that could get complicated, Zach.
Yeah, but see, that would be DOT that gets to deal with that. So we'll just let them and, and put that one down. So, um, you know, I, I've had a couple of questions in terms of the, uh, Supreme Court ruling on, uh, the possession, the simple possession. Um, yeah. When do the offenders that were in jail specifically for possession, when are they supposed to get released? Um, they're like, well, we don't know as soon as you can. Um, and then the second question, the follow up to that is, well, after they've been released and somebody's been incarcerated for say two years. And now that was found unconstitutional, whatever they were incarcerated for, can they come back and sue the state or can they sue the local jurisdiction? Um, the question on that one is, uh, you know, number one, I'm not an attorney. I don't know. Uh, but I say for sure, any good lawyer is going to tell you, you know, you just got a get out of jail free card, go home and quit breaking the law, number one. And number two, you don't want to take this to court because it could end up in a federal court and then you're going to go back to jail.
Yeah, there's, you know, and are they, you know, um, one of the questions that comes about on any of those, are they a low level, low level offender on, on the one thing, or is that something that that's all they got them on? See, there's sometimes more to it than that, of course, you know? Um, so the background of the, the quote unquote criminal is critical to that. The question that I have though is, uh, um, you know, on that case, that Blake, did you read that case?
Oh, I didn't read the whole thing. No.
Well, I thought that was relative to, um, and I was just trying to make that connection because I didn't quite get that in the conversation we had. I got in on a little late, but um, it was possession without knowledge.
Well, okay. So the argument that was made, and, and this is where the unconstitutionality conversation came in, the argument was, that was made was that, you know, what if, let's just say you and I are school kids. What if I pick up your backpack that just happens to be a red backpack, just like mine, except for two kilos of coke in it. And I'm carrying two kilos of coke and I get arrested. I'm like, yeah, sure. Look at my backpack. It's just some books. They open it up, turns out, oh, wow, no, there's a whole bunch of drugs in there. You're going to jail. And so the unconstitutionality really centered around that argument specifically talking about, you know, the, the law as it's written does not afford any discrimination there between, oh, well, I didn't know I had it to I had it on purpose. And that could go even, you know, oh, hey, I put my friend's pants on. Just happened to have a crack pipe in one pocket. I mean, and that, that's, that's literally the, the argument that they were making. And that's where they, they ruled on the grounds there for unconstitutionality. And I don't know how they change the, the laws to really, you know, I mean, is it with intent to sell or with intent to distribute? I mean, and how do you know that? Okay. Well, you've got scales and a big roll of money and a bunch of drugs. It's like, so, I mean, what, that creates a problem here. I mean, just in terms of policy, you know, how one has drugs, you know, if you're going to outlaw these substances, I mean, what's the point if you can't arrest somebody for having that? So how do you, how do you address that? So that's really where the, oh, well, I didn't mean to have that, you know, I didn't mean to have an entire trunk full of marijuana from Mexico. Whoops. You know, uh, it is, it sounds very ridiculous. Uh, I mean, but obviously the Supreme Court bought it.
Right. Well, in that particular case, they, I think circumstantial, I mean, they, I thought that they had some enough evidence that it showed that the person didn't, really didn't have that knowledge. Now there's a cartoon in the paper this last week where this guy's saying that to his partner in the car, just say that you didn't know it was under your seat. And, uh, on down the road they were going, smoking weed. So.
I was like, I didn't know that there was weed under the seat of this car when I stole it, officer.
Right. So it was kind of a joke about that, you know, but there's a lot more dynamic in there too, by the way, and I brought that up at, uh, the WAC meeting, but then nobody wanted to talk after I brought it up. That has to do with low level offenders, uh, low level offenders. Um, which might be their first time, it might be a possession case, but they are also used as, uh, informants if they're under the threat of going to jail. And so I was curious as to where the, um, WASP and, and those guys came in on that because in fact, that's a tool that they use, right, wrong or indifferent, by the way. Um, but, uh, to, uh, take people under the threat of going to jail, even if they're low level offenders um, for possession. So it, it, it creeps into some other areas of law enforcement as well.
Well, and, and realistically, what a lot of this stuff, uh, you know, this ruling in particular, you know, I, law enforcement, they're busy, uh, you know, and, and their job is to take the bad guys off the street and, and we all know that. Possession was always and always has been, whether it's marijuana or heroin, crack, whatever, any other, uh, illicit drug has been an easy reason or an easy excuse to do that, that, that the burden of proof is relatively low when compared to say an assault or a murder, uh, even a robbery, right? I mean, it's like, look, we caught you red handed. You've got this stuff in your pocket. We know it's illegal. Arrest you and charge you with that particular crime because the success rate for conviction is significantly higher than that of,
Yeah.
Say the robbery you may or may not have committed twenty minutes ago, you know, oh, you don't have any cash on you. You don't have the gun that they said, but you sure match everything and your license plate number matches, but we still don't know it was you. So I think what, you know, I mean, it, it, it is going to force our law enforcement uh, professionals to actually like, uh, undergo more investigation and probably really hone their investigation skills and, and really have a, a much better understanding of the law. And, and in that, I, it's, this isn't a bad deal by any means. I mean, and that's what the law enforcement profession does. They practice that on a regular basis, one way or the other. Um, really going to.
The other part is of course that, uh, you know, they get frustrated too when they have some, you know, evidence and they can't get somebody convicted on something that, uh, is, you know, is a meaningful crime or meaningless crime, however you want to look at it. But, um, you know, I mean, we have, uh, deals in court where you're plea bargaining and, you know, uh, you, uh, have a domestic, uh, violence charge. And, uh, you plea bargain out of that. Um, that, uh, I just, uh, taken on the, um, the drug charge and then they waived the domestic violence one. Well, that kind of gets in the cross on people um, for sure, because, uh, but it's, it's ways to make convictions stick and it's really frustrating for people when they see those kinds of things happen. So, you know, and so the, the court system is much part of it is the, the law enforcement side of it.
It is. You know, and it's important to, to remember and to note here, you know, as, as we're looking at the, the justice system as it sits in the United States is, it's not an absolute, you know, judges rely on precedent here, but at the same time, they do have the freedom to kind of break from precedent and set a new precedent. You know, generally from, I mean, if, if you're just going like flying in the face of an established precedent, but if you can find a, you know, a, a, accident, exigent circumstance or something new, something different, judges do have the latitude to make those decisions and make those changes. And so, uh, you know, I, I mean, that's, uh, what, what you're kind of talking about too is like, well, okay, look, you plead to uh, this simple possession charge and we're not going to ruin your life with this other one. But if we see you again, we're definitely going to, going to hit you on that. And that's where, you know, I mean, it, it is a fluid system and as we come in and start, you know, making more rigid rules within that fluid system, it, it kind of kind of creates some concerns and some problems in, in terms of real world functionality. And we're going to have to deal with those. Cause I don't know what that's going to look like, you know, come down to it, but we're definitely going to have to deal with those.
Yeah, well, that's a, a great, uh, great conversation to have just about comprehensive planning because you know how people put different meanings to comprehensive plans and, you know, it's frustrating for us to do that too. You know, it's, well, without a policy document that people read something else into it, that it's going to, it's going to convert to some terrible law. And, and like you say, there's a lot of flexibility within what we're doing there. So same kind of thing. I agree.
So, yep. And, and there's just a lot going on. So holy cow, look at that. I've gone way over time for you guys. So I, I'll, uh, I'll, I think probably closer off there, obviously more conversations to have. Um, as we come to this next week and, and the following week, you know, and we're actually back in committee, uh, we're going to have, like I said, another really good look at a lot of these, these bills, because a lot of them are nothing like what we saw the last go around. So stay tuned. I'll be in touch, uh, as those come out. Uh, the other thing that we're going to definitely watch for is as we come towards the end of session, any of the bills that may possibly be needed to come to an agreement and then last minute deemed necessary to implement budget. So fully normally, uh, you know, a normal year, we'll have some sort of a heads up on those. Uh, this year, you know, if we have a couple of days, I'll be surprised. So we'll be in touch quite a bit here over the next, you know, two, three, four weeks.
Yeah, it's a challenging year. That's for sure. Okay.
All righty. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you guys' time and as always, call or email anytime.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Yep.
So Mike Warden did get back with me. He is unable to meet at ten o'clock.
That's good.
He asked if there was another time to consider. Um, Aaron is in the union and he needed to be there.
Um, if, if he has time this afternoon, I don't know that we have any other time that we can move, work that in with. Commissioner Hoover, um.
So three o'clock is.
That's what time he's supposed to be, right?
Right.
So, um, we can let him know. So, um, we can let him know, actually, if you give me a couple of minutes, I can see how long, uh, Pete thinks her time would be. And we could move him up within that timeframe.
Let's do that. Want to do that?
Maybe two thirty?
Yeah. She's on at, uh.
One thirty.
One thirty, yeah. Let me go see. It fits TV two. So, I'll recess here for about five minutes.
Okay.
Commissioner Dietrow, can he come back soon or?
He didn't say. He just, he walked out and.
Okay. Maybe he's making a phone call. I'm going to run it out to my pickup, see if I've worked, bought some glasses with me. So, I extend the recess for another five minutes.
Okay.
What did, uh, Pete say?
Uh, she said that she could finish everything she had in thirty minutes.
Oh, okay, cool.
So, Mike could come at two or two thirty.
All right.
I think that they have, you know, they have getting ready for their hearing on their minds anyway, so. I'm not sure I got what Mr. Hoover was talking about from George unless you forwarded it to us. Lanny, is that what happened? Um, the communications from, uh, George Sartin, TV district. He said, did you see what he sent? And I, last time I got something from him was in January, so unless he sent it through you.
Um. He, uh, asked, uh, on Friday if he could meet with the commissioners and so I scheduled him.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, I didn't receive anything.
That's okay.
Unless it's in my junk mail, I think it looks.
Primarily it's to talk about that. So, I think we know where we need to go now.
I don't have anything in my junk mail from him.
Okay.
About it. Um, I, I did have an inquiry from Leah McCormick asking about the support letter that she thought the commissioners had provided and that the support letter identified the exact amount and the funds to be used. Um, but it didn't say, uh, uh, meeting minutes did not say, um, a specific, a specified amount that was to support, um, the district.
And she had, did she have concerns about that?
She, she did. Um, but she mostly just took Pete in the loop.
I see, okay.
Not specific concerns about the board using it. Um, and I think that she, I think, what, you guys had talked to her about it.
We did, yeah.
Um, afterwards.
Okay.
Um, but it, it also, um, they're, following those two discussions, the one with, uh, Ernie and George, and then the following one with Leah, we were then notified that, um, the district had been approved some funds.
Yeah, I think this was, uh.
For the equipment that early, um.
I think this request was relative to some matching funds to do more work. So, we'll, we'll find out from him today.
The Open Road Alliance sent an application for ninety thousand along with our Schenectady Commerce Safe Start Fund, um, that would continue to support the economic alliance activities rather to stay home in the face of the pandemic and the fund applies to this crisis. Um, they also said Commercefield say will dedicate seventy-five thousand to the project. So, there is about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars pooled funds. So, the chance, not all the funds, well, we realized this eighty, ninety percent sure of the success of the grant, but that there was some real work ahead with KSPS to work out on the ground issues to clear the snow and secure details that will allow repairs and upgrades. I thought there was some in-kind discussion too that the county might help with that initial effort to get, to clear the way that was going to be worked out with Mike, um, because they had the, the snow equipment. Um, Commissioner said if the Economic Alliance and the District Fund could help fairly quickly, but he isn't sure what's available in the account. Commissioners slot fifty to sixty thousand could be possible if the committee approves. Commissioners were in favor of the county exploring commitments.
Okay, well, I, yeah, I got, I found this letter from, on the TV district, from the fifth. Um, which you didn't apparently get CC'd. Let me send it to you so you got it. So, what it'll have to do is go to the, um, Economic Development, or Economic Alliance, um, Executive Board with a, um, with the information about the budget so that that, uh, executive committee can respond because that's the process, right? And that's what he's asking in this email is just what's the best way to, um, access that fund.
And then finally to the commissioner who would then.
Yep.
Make the final decision.
Yep. There you go. One of my, okay. Dave responded back for the, um, pest, Tricam report program. I sent you that agreement for the court. It needs to have a signature block on it.
Is it ready?
Yep. It might come through with the markups. You have to turn the markups back off. Every time I open it, the markups come back.
Yeah, I'll do that.
No, this, Commissioner Hoover can make it back. He was going to come back, I thought, at ten thirty to talk about the, um.
Yeah.
Your local agreement. Have you had a chance to look at it?
Just, uh, what we had last week.
Yeah, so we have a resolution now that actually applies to us.
Okay.
And, uh, um, your local agreement that's been reviewed by the attorney a second time. And all but one of his, uh, notes were changed. And it seemed okay with him. That's what I got back from him. So, if you want to pass it without Commissioner Hoover, we can give him till eleven or you want to wait?
Yeah.
Okay.
It won't take us two minutes.
Yeah, yeah. I, I sent it out the most recent, quite a while ago, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. At least it was there during the weekend.
Has it been assigned a number or is it?
The resolution is twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one.
Is, uh, George still coming at eleven-thirty instead?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Mike is coming at two with Aaron Cole.
All right.
That was the only change.
Okay.
Then we need to do this before eleven o'clock or should we?
I don't know. Not really.
Okay.
I mean, we see if Andy shows up. Yeah, he should be a part of the decision.
Have you sent over the minutes yet?
I probably not. Um, I can do that in just a sec.
Well, you asked the question. I was looking for him and I thought I couldn't find. So, you got to see Ernie's request? Did you talk to him about the Sidewash Creek proposal?
No, I just saw that and he made it to my attention as chairman. I, yeah, if, oh, hasn't realized that you're.
Yeah. Well, anyway, I thought, yeah, he came in the other day.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, and it was later in the day, so, and that he told me about it. He was trying to get over you. I thought, I was pretty sure it was because he was in your district, of course. That would mean it inch. By the time I heard the word, it was used to extradite an Indian from a bar, Sidewash.
Yeah, I saw that.
I, uh, I asked him that day what it meant. Well, regardless of his letter, it'll, it'd have to be brought up in public anyway.
Right.
Be a hot topic, wouldn't it?
Look what happened to Squaw Creek.
No, no, no. No, it did. Uh, didn't that get changed to Hunter Creek? Yeah.
Yeah. I don't agree with it myself personally, but it's, you know, they went through the process.
Well, mostly, most people don't know that that means that.
Right, exactly.
Even tribal members don't know, so. I thought it was something like tricking somebody. That's what I thought.
Yeah, that's what I always, yeah. My interpretation, yeah.
I didn't even realize it had anything to do with anybody particularly.
Oh.
But that's an application that people use of, of words, you know? I mean, there's all kinds of them out there for sure. Removing somebody from the bars usually eighty-six though. I don't know where that came from. Eighty-sixth?
Oh, yeah.
Do you?
No.
Actually, there's a law that allows people to kick you out of the bar.
Does it have something to do with like a RCW or an Ork County?
That's what I was wondering if it was some law that, article that said.
Yeah.
They have the right to kick you out. You been eighty-sixth? I won't ask you if you've ever been eighty-sixth though. An old story is that it, it, uh, one claim is that it comes from the Old West where the bar customer had become drunk and disorderly so the bar could serve them a drink with eighty percent, eighty-six percent alcohol by volume, one hundred and seventy-two proof. That, that drink would basically knock the treble maker out. He'd been eighty-six. It was one story anyway. Vertical eighty-six of the Military Code of Justice is, uh, AWOL.
Oh, really? Wow. That's interesting.
But there was another story that says that, uh, during the Korean War, a reference to the F-eighty-six fighter jet, when an F-eighty-six was shot down an enemy plane, it was eighty-six. When it was shot down by an enemy. Yep, they did use it as a, it was Chinook jargon. It was, uh, in reference to an American Indian. The character, uh, were relating to Indians worthless, stingy, or bad. So, it was a part of that Chinook jargon, came from a French. That's the first description of it. Maybe they used it on Sidewash Creek because it doesn't hardly have any water in it. How's the snow up at your place?
Uh, it's melting out real fast. We've still got a couple of places with two point three.
Yeah, yeah. The cool spots.
The trees, that's what I think.
Yep.
Uh, it is moving fast.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering what it'd look like up there and, uh.
Yeah, yeah. The cricks are starting to blow. You see that happen.
Yeah.
They melt back yet. So, but there's a lot of snow up probably about four thousand feet high. I'm sure you're seeing that a lot.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I went up to, um, the, uh, Blue Lake, up in the Line Belt Lakes there. I didn't get too far up in there before he turned around.
Yeah. And it gets, that one gets, it gets in mud season too, very spicy.
Yeah.
That's always fun.
Yep. You gotta watch those mud holes because some, some of them you can go through, but some of them seem like bottomless pits.
Yeah, we did go up with a Subaru, put it in, so the undercarriage was flat on the ground. The wheels were bitter.
Got the suction going in.
How good a car get at, you're stuck at that point. All four wheels are.
That you can do with a D-six cat.
We had to get the tow truck there and all on cable because it's been getting close.
Yeah, yeah, let's do it, yeah.
Of course, Subaru's are light enough to pull them out.
Yeah.
That was quite the surprise.
That was in the driveway? Oh, man.
I remember a lot of stuff, Dallas, probably kicked that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I saw one of those up on Dry Cooley Road once and it was just a surprise.
Oh, yeah.
Pit, you know, because there was a few muddy spots, you know, there's surface mud, you know, but this cousin of mine got stuck in there like tighter than anything and there was no way I was pulling him out of that. Ended up getting it.
That's why this one's been drifting driveway for twenty years.
Uh-huh.
The water release and the water in the road and everything just messed it up.
Yep.
My wife, when you'd be opening the door, she'd get out through the window, come back, tell me what was going on.
Yeah, every day.
Yeah, that's fun.
Yeah, like I said, you can get a D-six cat stuck like that. I've seen before where they had three of them all in a row.
Yeah.
Trying to get each other out stuck.
Three years ago, we had a, right in the, right by our house, had a propane truck stuck.
Ooh.
It dropped off our cat.
Yeah.
Driver could see it was snow and just went right in.
Was he delivering to you?
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
He's not happy. What can I say?
Yeah, there was, uh, I remember talking to a guy when I worked over here for, um, Coleman Fuel and they, you, the driver refused to go up to a, a couple of particular driveways one year. Well, their arguments flew, but he said, well, they didn't, well, they rode. I shouldn't have to take that fuel truck.
Yeah, I've heard of a couple of UPS guys stuck already.
Yeah, oh, is that right? Yeah.
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything from J.H. Greenrod up there yet.
Hmm, I mean, I've done that. Good luck. I'd be tempted to, but, you know, I don't want to get stuck in that one either.
Yeah. Oh, it has that one spot in it. It's just terrible.
Yeah, sure, the pass there and that north slope.
We were getting complaints there back in twenty-seventeen and I drove on it and.
I've been up the lower Sidewash a couple of times.
Yeah.
And that's fine, no problem.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I went up there and they're, they were taking a path across the property next to it, you know? There was a young lady there. She was on a mountain bike. She was moving to another property. And she said, you can go ahead and drive over there.
Yeah, that was, sometimes it's pretty light there, J.H. Greenrod, it could be, it could be a blind, safe to take that.
Yeah. Yeah, if you live there, you gotta either go one way or the other, I guess, you know.
You don't have a lot of choice.
Looks like most of the routes are probably going out to Schwelliken rather than out to.
I, yeah, it's downhill.
Because most everybody's over on that side of that hole, I think.
She gets the main county road.
Yeah.
You're okay.
Yeah, that one needs more than just a little ballast.
Yeah, I could see, use some serious work in there, but.
Yeah.
Hardly justified, so if you beat it, ultimately out.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
It's not possible to get it done.
Yep. I guess the amount of complaints it takes to get you to spend.
There, there is kind of a correlation.
On those, uh, those, uh, the primitive roads.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think people understand the concept of primitive road.
Well, it's.
Canadian visitors come down, they see that sign, look at the dinosaurs.
Yes, well, it's coupled with the term exempt subdivisions.
Yeah, there's an assumption of equal services everywhere.
Yeah.
Doesn't quite work out there.
Yeah. Yeah, then there's some private roads in there that really had the bottoms drop out of them.
All the pressure's in there, immediately, you hear about it.
Oh, yeah.
You guys are supposed to come fix it.
I had to drive out and see how bad it was and it was, I was impressed by the lack of road surface, actually road bed.
Yeah.
The guy I went out there with was going, well, you, you got four wheel drive, you can drive right, see that? And I go, yeah, you, you bet. My cell phone doesn't work here.
No, 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 that's. Someone's got real serious perception of problems.
Yeah.
Yeah, you start driving vehicles off around and everything.
Makes it worse, that's right, yeah. Making your water bars yourself and they're not exactly strategic.
No, no.
Yeah, I went up on a reservation yesterday up Haley Creek and it was all pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, good, that's very good. I'm trying to be essential for the TV disrespect, I don't want to.
Yeah, yeah. I wonder what that looks like right now. Right up on Omak Mountain.
I'll tell you the story about last year.
Oh, okay.
Mike Ward, just a hero.
Oh, is that right?
He's got to give him a three thing.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah, we had, my grandmother had that lookout one year and, um, I was just looking forward to it. I was about eleven years old. I was gonna stay there, uh, for the rest of the summer. And, uh, we drove up, she tore her muffler off her little fifty-two Chevy and sun that last pitch. And, uh, she, she, uh, turned down the job.
You know, you know, Sherwin. Sherwin-Williams.
Oh, that sounds familiar. Uh-huh.
For the tribe.
Uh-huh.
Then the last big fire up there, he was stationed with the crew at the top of that mountain.
Uh-huh.
Whether it was the fires, you know, the great stories.
I'll bet. I'll bet.
Three, the, the, working outside itself, it can be fired pretty easily.
Uh-huh, yeah, oh, good.
They can take all the timber down.
Yeah, it was rocky top. Yeah, she had relief on Moses that year too, and so she decided, I wasn't very happy about that. Because we spent time on Gold Mountain and others, you know, but that one is a little more of a challenge. White Stone.
Place of principle. For our lookout up there, there it's just a building, it's not a mountain, it's not a tower.
Oh, uh-huh.
And that's it, that was pretty, it was terribly too windy.
Yeah. Did you drive all the way to it?
Yeah.
I went up and stayed overnight at, uh, Goat Peak once.
Okay.
And, uh, watched the fire down in Lost River from there, which was a pretty nice place to watch it from.
Yeah, there's, there's, I was over in Montana, the Liddy area, up with this horse and those guys. They've set up all of those southern use lookouts, they've heard of people who stayed there.
Oh, yeah.
And there's got a contractor that goes around cleaning some of the paint.
What we doing?
Or two extra remnants.
Yeah. Did that with a few lighthouses.
They're doing that only in India.
Yeah, well, I, if you want courage to the local board, protect the city. If you guys can run up there, uh, uh, help them out from here, but.
Uh-huh.
I don't know, which is fair.
Mm-hmm. So is, uh.
Yeah, I, I don't know why they wouldn't want to, now that it's, uh, Colville.
Yeah.
They got, they got a little bit more money, they got a little bit more money for roads and they got more money for a lot of different things. I would encourage them to do that.
Yeah, the tower over Cornell View is all this great shape, uh, posted.
The one up on.
What's the one that sits at the museum at Molson? Isn't that the old Cornell View?
It, it, it might be, but, you know, the metal, I think it was replaced with that metal tower.
Oh.
That's what I see.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, and the lower stairs got burned out, but otherwise it survived that last big fire.
Buck Mountain's in pretty good shape too, isn't it?
What?
Buck Mountain.
It, it should, I mean.
Yeah.
I've been up there after it burned and it was pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
The beginning away from Manning Towers.
Yep. That would be nice, especially the ones where the roads are adequate. You gonna join us up here, Leo? Might as well, because you're gonna say something, aren't you?
Probably.
Come on up, just.
Gosh, Leo.
Want to be a part of it.
Good to see you again, Leo. This is a good old day.
Well, we got a couple more minutes, actually, but. Yeah. I don't know, we, we're so off schedule today.
Do we wanna?
Starting early wouldn't hurt.
Go ahead and pass that resolution?
I, I don't know, you want, let's wait, we can do it later in the day, yeah. Make, give Andy a.
Yeah, it is no hurt, really.
Andy coming in later.
Yeah, he was here this morning, but he forgot he had a meeting.
He got, uh, Union.
He was gonna come in ten thirty, but he wouldn't make it. He probably got wrapped up in, uh, intense negotiations. But hopefully he'll get back. But you can go ahead and start, we're half a minute away. Yeah.
So at least that it's some clarity in the voice for people to take this up to clearly. Uh, I'm George Thornton, I'm here to represent the Oakham Mountain Valley TV District number one to provide an update to the county commissioners about where we are in restoring and providing resilience in the network. First of all, I wanted to thank you for all of the support that you've given us. It has made this effort possible. And we're building on, on the foundation to get more and more done. Give you some of those details before I leave today. First of all, the temporary repairs on Omak Mountain are completed. And we, is minimal service back in broadcast area. Right now, that means PBS, KHQ, Fox, and FNX are now back on the system. Uh, we were limited to restoring four, uh, stations because of the, we have a very, very temporary antenna system set up, which doesn't allow us to put in any more, uh, stations than that at this time. Working with us has been, uh, KHQ, I was looking at KSPS, KXLY, and we've had conversations with Fox and, uh, and so far KRAM has not responded, but we're working on that. They're offering technical, financial, and logistical and planning support through our effort. So we're getting a lot of help from them too. Uh, I want to mention also that the tribe has gone out of their way to help us and support us and, uh, we expect that to continue. That's been a great support and they've been very open to helping us. Equally, I, I can't neglect what the county has done for us, specifically Mike Ward with Dispatch and the use of the snow cap and his driving, he did hero level work, uh, two weeks ago in, in taking the cap up and, and putting a road in up to the top of Omak Mountain. My understanding is, it wasn't for the light of heart, and it was a pretty tough job. Coincidentally, AT&T was going up to work on their equipment cell tower on the top and they came in and at the last little bit into the summit, helped assist. There was something about a fifteen-foot drift they had to dig through, so, uh, so, you know, that, that was.
Yeah.
Appreciated is AT&T's help in that case, so, uh, you know, it's, it's been a real, any, anytime the mess, there's been a real level of cooperation from a variety of people. And then that's been huge at your part in getting that started, knowing there was county, uh, support and approval for this effort. That's been opened up some doors, yeah, I thank you for that. Okay, um, that was the first trip two weeks ago. Second trip happened on March third, which is, which was last Wednesday. Uh, that was, uh, Aganda County cap, uh, snow cap, uh, a snow cap from KHQ and snowmobiles took technicians and equipment up and we installed necessary equipment to get the temporary service back online. So that, that, and somebody late afternoon that day, we, we were getting calls in from our various, uh, college sponsors, listeners, that they were starting to get reception. So, uh, to best my knowledge, that's still operating today, but we did a heck of a job. We had a contractor from Seattle come in who did the tower work, actually, uh, the pole that we transferred one set of antennas to it from our collapsed antenna and then we installed another new one in the process. So, but, then in the summer, the next step, uh, will be putting up a much more capable tower, stronger tower, to support all of this, to bring in, and bring in all of the additional.
With, with an actual structure?
Yes, it'll be a, you know, one of your traditional three-legged, um, with all the bracing, you know, much bigger and stronger than what we've had in the past. So, so that's, that's coming in and that's dependent upon weather and weather conditions. So, you know as well as I do, that could be anytime from late, maybe April to July, it can happen. But we have all of the, uh, personnel, all the, uh, things in place to do that, that's.
It's great for the weather.
It's a question of timing. Okay, uh, we, we, it's going to be not a three hundred and sixty-degree signal, it'll be two hundred and seventy-degree signal because we have to avoid beaming directly forward. There is something about the border, they don't like foreign signals crossing the border. Understandable, but we can work with that. So that allows us to beam a lot of signal, more signal out over the Colville, uh, reservation. And, and, and that's one of the things we're looking into in the future with a small satellite on the ridge, and finding a way to beam down in the Esteban Valley. And if I, we could, we're looking at the possibility of Moses Mountain or potentially another site along the ridge that will allow us to do that. And that's, uh.
How about in the Tunk Basin? How about in the Tunk Basin?
Uh, they, they get some signal there already, but it's two hundred and seventy-degree reach, uh, we've got several people in that valley.
Oh, okay.
So, so that is happening. I don't know about the farthest east corner, but I know there's people in Tunk Valley receiving the signal. Direct contact with a spot in there to, to give me advice as to what's happening.
Uh, possibly Crawfish Lake?
That's the far east part.
Yeah.
That is, that could be possible and there's nothing technologically preventing it at all. But, but that, the biggest worry is, is a signal leaking over in the camp. And we would have to, there's all kinds of hoops that we'd have to go through. And, and basically it's avoiding contact from their electronics. Without, if, if, like I said, it can be done, we have to go through better version of the FCC.
In other words, you don't want to call it the International Internet.
You, you got, I, I could sit in your phone number if you want, it's just to go ahead.
You know, you get close to the border and we get their cell phone service at a right rate.
I could sit up there, just up, down roaming the Canada world.
Yeah, and it, it gets costly, doesn't it?
Oh, boy. We don't go into detail. So, anyhow, that's where we're at today, so at some time between now and middle summer, we will restore full service and all of the parts are in place to do that. It's just a matter of, of the road, um, and tracking. So, okay.
Um, just one other question, um, so with, uh, that cooperation from the tribes, I know that it was a, um, uh, oh, the permitting, is that all the?
No.
Okay, but that's beyond the tribes too, that's with the, uh, Bureau Interior.
BIA, uh, it, it has its own timeline.
Okay.
And that's, it's not, it's not a local issue.
Correct, okay.
So there is wider details for us to clean up in terms of, uh, documentation for insurance and bonding, but all, all the pieces are in place.
Okay.
But, uh, then you get the final BIA and because everything is in place, we, uh, locally, the Colville Tribe has allowed that. It's very cooperative, standing forward before the final documents are placed.
I imagine they're confident that they're gonna go forward with that, okay.
And then again, your support has been part of that. They feel confident that we, and that we are substantial. And have the backing, we're relying on. Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, so the future, and I already said, and I already discussed that, is the, uh, restoring of full service. All snow cam channels that we traditionally have, many of them have sub-channels in the, on the digital, uh, service. We're talking possibly as many as twenty-three, uh, service channels, which is relatively the same as what they have. With their TV difference. So that, that is, like I said, that's gonna happen. Converting, providing an opportunity for people to convert over to digital TV is another discussion. That, you have to have a different antenna in itself, so that's something else and we're just trying to figure out how to enable our customer base, which, you know, this is the whole point, it's low-income people who have difficulty, uh, we talked to roll remote and, you know, it's important that we assist them to the best of our ability, that's what we do, that, but that's in, in the discussion. Okay, additional things, uh, a community radio outlet, I've got a, I've got a, possibly a public service channel, which I discussed in that concept with, with you, and contact with Dispatch, Public Health, Sheriff's Department.
Emergency management.
Yeah, emergency management and, uh, I have to talk to Josh Thompson, it's an opportunity for him there too.
What was the first thing we said, community?
The first one was a community radio, so that if there were a group who wanted to broadcast there, we would have, uh, we would have a place where they could have an antenna. So that's, with the new tower, it can support a lot more, uh, connections. People who want to take advantage of that, because that's, that, uh, allows us to essentially lease out to other entities that help support then the operation, which is about, right now, it's about forty percent of our, of our normal budget. It is, is leasing of the opportunities.
I see.
Yeah, and includes Pickens Mountain, so.
Right.
Okay, and then we have to get the, the various satellite translators, there's the one at Fox Mountain down here, there's one all just over by Riverside, and of course the Pickens side. All, none of those have been visited and maintained and now it's needing to be upgraded. Uh, so that will be part. So that will be part of this early summer project, that all of them brought up current compatibility and all the electronics being renewed, and that's always within the budget that we talked about earlier.
A little easier access to those.
Yeah, we've got a way on that access a little bit, you know, they're all lower altitude but access, even if that is still an issue. Working with our technology partners in Spokane, we have to fit their schedule also.
Sure.
So, okay, now, I had a discussion with the Safe Star people, the State Department of Commerce, and they are encouraging us to expand our vision of what's possible, and they will help us reach out to more funding opportunities as a consequence, because their goal is jobs, training, that commercial opportunity. And so the discussion is long to line in a coalition with the Spokane stations, potentially the Natu Valley College in North, to provide training for individuals to develop talents and skills in broadcasting, developing content, local technology skills, maintaining these sites. That has just been opened up, I can't, I don't have any elaboration on that standard, so that's my job, is to continue to reach out and discuss this vision, this possibility, so we can get a firm proposal to the State Department of Commerce and then start reaching out the funding from that.
So you have been talking to Natu Valley College yet?
I sent a message in this morning that cannot be seen, of course, it was just this morning, as we see this.
So they are represented on the Economic Development District, very well represented here in fact, so.
My contact was through the local foundation, and I'm sure they'll pass it on to them there.
Well, I'll bring it up at the Economic Development District.
And I, I guess, is that opportunity, and the grants that are being looked at are specifically focused on tribal members, low-income minorities, people who are, you know, which is a lot of people in our camp that within one of those three categories, and that they, and give them this opportunity to develop skills in this area, and then I don't get to talk to you about the lack of local news and inability to reach out, that would be part of this effort, is to bring back more local news coverage. Now, that's outside of the scope of the TV district, so we have to, we need to, we should go out and find partners to make this happen. So that's, but it looks, I'm very sure that with our serious effort, we can get the funding to put back rolling, but.
Did the TV that we had before, a long time ago, we had local TV, was that through that transmitter that?
I don't know that.
Do you remember that?
It could have been through one of the cables.
It was, I mean, there's one in the room that's older than me. I'm sorry.
I'm glad she doesn't.
Someone or someones, I don't know. Anyway, but when we used to have, where did we get the old local channels from, when we had the old black and white, wasn't that?
Old Mountain.
Yeah.
Came to Riverside in nineteen fifty-six through Mount Olive.
There's your answer.
So just remember, we had a period of time there where we had another TV station, and I didn't know where that went, actually.
Certainly one of the things.
It's kind of a neat deal.
Like K F P S, something like that.
Well, there was some local transmission here, and it's been since probably the late seventies maybe.
Oh, wow.
So if we can find a partner to do that production side, we're moving towards developing it back up and get it happening. That's, it'll be there regardless, that's set up to do that. Now, it's finding the organization and the people to make it happen is the next step, and that, in order to get the money, I have to find out a way for people to sign on to that effort. And so that's what I'm working on for the next few months. Because there's a limited timeline, but the opportunity to get this, I do have a short window of opportunity here to do this. So it's very much an envisioning stage, very much in trying to bring on partners, very much early in the planning stage, but that's where we're looking at in the future questions.
Is one of your sources Northwest Area Foundation is a channel?
I'm sorry.
Northwest Area Foundation.
I'm not aware of that one.
Okay. You might write that one down, it's, I recall them funding projects here, they're in Minnesota, but they actually, they call themselves Northwest Area. But it's a reduce poverty, achieve prosperity kind of an organization that serves the Northwest, Minnesota and over there.
Yeah, so that would be on the web or with the specific content?
Yeah, it's N W A F dot org.
Okay.
And there's a, they do grants, and they even have a section for grant seekers, so.
Yeah, yeah. Our contacts now are through the, through the Department of Commerce, and they have brought up several opportunities, they don't specifically name them, you show us the proposal, and we don't need to take it to.
Well, the Northwest Area Foundation supports organizations anchored in the culture of the people they serve and who are dedicated to expanding economic opportunity for Native American communities.
Okay, that fits what we're, our goal here is to reach out over much more of the reservation, and there's a lot of people living remotely out there, of all kinds, and so keeping that vision at low cost, over the air, a service. That's the point here, and that's everybody who wants it.
So I know that Leah is here to talk about, or at least address the, I think I'm right anyway.
Am I bad, transparent?
So.
So I do have several questions actually.
Sure.
It came up to Liam McCormick, Open On County Treasurer, by the way. Their, a question came up last week about where the TV district's fifty thousand dollars commitment from the county is, and I'm like, there is nothing in writing to me, you know, from that. And so that would be my first question, is there a commitment to transfer?
Let me ask you that question.
Because we don't, oh.
Let me answer that one first, okay, just so you know.
Okay, but just to add to it, my office does nothing without anything coming down here, right?
Yeah, well, and this, that process requires going through the Economic Alliance.
Okay.
And then they have a recommendation to us, and then we would have to make a decision after the board, the executive board made a recommendation.
Okay, it says that we can't do anything until you guys go through all your hoops.
Yeah, yes.
And then, as I'm looking to you, I'm wondering, what's the district's commitment, money-wise?
We dipped into our reserve fund, twenty thousand dollars.
I want more than that.
Yeah, yeah, and given some of the things that talked about, especially for short-term usage, you know, we've got to cover money costs, knowing that the funding from the counties and these others might come in later, we need that, we feel we have a lot of liquidity through our funds if when necessary.
Okay, so then, as you say liquidity, that brings me to another question.
Yeah.
Are you using the county's money for a reserve fund?
No, no, it would, it would, well, in the sense that we would be putting some of that, we can spend all of the camp money, and some of the equipment necessary for full service of the summer and the tower is the camp money.
I don't think you would pass muster for the Alliance for.
Yeah, you can't, we can transfer money, and then you have to be doing an investment somewhere.
No, that is not going to happen.
No, it would have to be specifically project area.
Insurance seats is for that.
Right, but it's still, to present it to the Alliance for Recommendation, it would have to be defined project.
Okay, and so then I saw in the minutes that the amount, the county's commitment amount was up to fifty thousand, so what are we talking about, the whole fifty or up?
Well, up to is primarily because of the uncertainty of the fund itself, so we wanted to make sure that we have that covered.
So fifty is your max?
Yeah.
Yes.
And again, you know, we don't, we don't do that without that process with the Alliance under emerging opportunities.
Right, and is that still even in effect, because we don't break it down that way at the county anymore. Infrastructure is infrastructure, emerging is, by the wayside, a long time ago.
The reason it didn't go to, by the wayside.
It did, because we don't break it down anymore, that way.
Here's when it does go away, actually, it's when that bomb stays for.
So just a couple more years.
Yeah, but then you have a conversation with cities, because the cities are part of that process, and they were the ones that did not object, well, they didn't come along without, you know, concern, but when we started paying the Eastlake Sewer, they understood the situation, and just went, okay.
All right, well, that, okay, that's another thing. And then here's a question maybe for you. To my knowledge, and maybe someone else knows more about this, there's only three TV districts in the state of Washington.
I understand that.
Kidde Cap, and then we've got the other two. And so having said that, and this is just informational, I mean, you don't have, and you guys know what I'm talking about when I say this, and I don't know if I'm saying it the right way, so help me out, when you've only got those three small districts in the entire state, there's very little clout at the state level for small districts. So is this going to be a permanent type funding that we are looking at? Because that makes me concerned about other districts that may also.
This is a one-time request.
And based on the cost of that service and the catastrophe, this is a one-time thing. That was my understanding.
Yeah, we, in fact, that's another one of those that I want to say, we don't do it recurring funding like that, but the reason we are doing it when we're making payments is the Stampede Arena.
Yeah.
Yeah, you said that, you guys said that a lot, so I'm going to remember that.
Yeah, yeah. But that was, that was a payment program essentially.
I think in the big picture, if we don't restore good service, we can't, because we can't expect people to make the assessment, you know, that's been leaking away steadily. We can't come back with the argument that we've got a reliable service and we're extending it, that we have no chance of recovering that.
Well, you couldn't do it without these partners either.
No, no. We are, we are, we have developed a collection of partners who both potentially.
And then this is just who Leah is, so I have to ask a question.
Your treasurer, right?
Just to get everything out on the table, is there any extra staff that is going to be paid as a result of doing all of this?
No.
So all of their, because, and the reason I'm bringing that up, and I hope I wasn't, I didn't mean to sound negative about that, it's just that these TV districts have gotten, you know, in the past, they've had three or four people on staff, not sustainable.
No, totally agree, and we can't, can't function that way, we know that.
I had to bring it up.
I think, no, I appreciate all that, I mean, it's, it's important to think about in the whole scheme of things. In fact, I, again, that's why I brought up the partnership again, because that operational side is just nip and tuck without the partnership.
And we have the Spokane group of stations doing in-kind work for us and planning, and a lot of coming over and installing things, they're doing all of this, the hours of transportation, and their technicals, all.
They're investing in it.
Just doing it on their own right now.
From on.
From going over, in-con, whatever, we're not going to put on, and it's no money out of our pocket at this point.
And so that's awesome.
Yes.
There's another red flag. I just want everything to be considered.
I am very ignorant in this way, and.
You are not.
I appreciate your input.
Is that, what happens, the day K F P S says, I'm done, if you guys, you know, and, I don't know, KHQ says, yeah, we're no longer.
Right.
Are we going by doing this? We have to make sure that we're sustainable on our, on our own.
Yeah, that's the point, we have to increase people are willing to figure this out. That's, that's a big point here. And then after this big capital investment surge, which will be through this summer, and the various money sources that we have, it's back to trying to live on our assessment plus our uses.
Which way, when I send mine in, I'm going to go, attention Leah.
Okay, why did I get rid of that right there?
Okay, just let me go wherever I'll be sending.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll have to figure out.
Don't forget when you call. I get a nap with those.
No, we didn't.
I appreciate that. We have, we didn't do viable, this is, this is just to get us back to a point where we can honestly ask our user base to support us. If we don't do that, you're likely, you don't have a future.
I know Kidde Cap is having, I do have given them, you know, it's possible, I mean, I wish that maybe a group could be formed, you know, because like I said, there's validity in numbers, if you guys.
Yeah, like the Port District Association or something like that in the smaller area.
Because people that come over here, or my classmates that live in another state right now, they come up and they go, what is a T? You mean cable, right? And so there is a lot more strength in numbers.
I'm wondering too if there's potential, and this is just, but if there's potential with these efforts to put broadband in the region, and there's, you know, big investments being prepared to be made at the state and the federal level, if there's some kind of a partnership even with that kind of thing that could occur.
That's one of the reasons we're going to a bigger, more substantial tower, is for that opportunity for broadband initiative that's currently ongoing, and we know more about it than I do, that they might be, if they're up, if they want to, we have the tower, we have the, we have the room to expand other people's use of it. Equally, when we definitely work on Fox, Olive, and Pickens, we make similar improvements on them, so that they would be available for that opportunity.
Because sometimes microwaves at those sites, and I know my experience with that was just in permitting of one in Orville, that was intended to serve that area over the Pickens area for, I don't know if it's broadband, but it's wireless service.
Do you know if that TV district that used to be at Orville, is that operational? Anything happening up there, Paul?
No, no, the money went to this TV district.
I found nobody who knows anything, so.
Was that on the mountain above the airport that they had that transmission on?
Yes, they used to have a facility up on Fletcher Mountain that picked up the signal. It's still there, and I know the town uses it some of the regions.
Yeah, the trade, Fletcher Mountain.
And I can't let anybody to tell me where did they get their signal from that they re-beamed down to the, what's that, Eater Mountain? And so was that a direct line of sight to Spokane?
Off of where?
Fletcher Mountain.
Yeah, but you said another.
Eater.
Then it was being the signal down to Eater.
Oh, above the airport.
Orville, or broadcast out there. But I can't get anybody who can tell me where that Fletcher Mountain facility, where they get a direct signal from, my father was.
You might ask some of the old timers at Molson.
Yeah, I, my father was part of that effort, and he, along with various other people that involved, to do that back in the fifties. I'm not going to give you something. Back said, there's also a small antenna over Throde Creek on the southeast, not too far from Buckhorn, where there's an antenna system that rebroadcast, and I don't know who operated that, but you get up there, it's on private, it was on for service land, because I haven't reported, what is this? Who did it? Nobody knew anything about it. It's obviously done by some locals, and it picked up a signal from somewhere.
Well, there's, you know, you never know about older infrastructure.
Sunny around, you might know about it.
Okay.
You know, you, we, we don't know how older infrastructure is gonna fit into today's world any more than we know how old people will fit in. But they're needed more old people these days than they used to think. They just want you to know that.
Yeah. So, so that, that, that answers your question that's going around?
Yeah. I just was trying to think of things that, you know, I'm always kind of, I do this in my office too. That sounds like a great idea and I, uh, uh, as it goes down the line, so you wanna make sure that you try to cover anybody, anyone's concern.
Thank you.
Volunteer is a long time to get involved in this, so people need to filter. It has been one, opening one door and finding button all over down the line. Okay.
I've been here long enough to know.
Yeah, you've been there, you know that.
It's kinda like doing a subdivision in Okanagan County.
Oh, I have no problem with that.
Did I say that?
Yeah, I, we'll see how long it's, you know, we have a limited window of opportunity here for these additional funders. I'd push hard right now to see how far we can go with this.
Do you know like down the road though, in order to maintain that, it's pretty hard to have any person.
The idea of working with the, with the, whatever educational, technological, technology training people we can, develop local talent. And it's a, it's a problem throughout the end of the West, Spokane people telling. And so they're more than willing to assist in developing the program. Particularly interested in tribal members. It fits their model, KSPS's stations over there. They can train up some people, they can give apprenticeships and all kinds of opportunities. That's what I've been told. So they're wanting to support this kind of.
You'd think that there's so much, um, focus on these mountaintops, that there's also a technical side to just maintaining them, that not everybody has to maintain their own stuff, you know?
You, you want to just somebody that is willing to listen to that, right? That's really. Need to develop that, that wanting to get involved to develop job opportunities.
Check with.
It's not the same. It's somebody else.
Well, two, two economic development districts, the Economic Alliance, obviously, and then the, um, Economic Development District with Stacy Luxon Meyer is with the college there and very much a leader in that group of folks. And then working with the Workforce Development Council, which, um, I served on that one for the county. Um, I think that there's enough opportunities to talk about job, um, you know, workforce development that you'd think that, you know, that we could before, cause they have, uh, young people in these programs are training up that, uh,
Yeah.
just starting jobs. I mean, there's just quite a, quite a lot of effort put into employment, training here.
Meeting the people in Spokane there, you know, they're younger to me, but they are a lot different to me.
Yeah.
And so they need to develop a pipeline to.
Yes.
And I, and they're well aware of that because this whole idea of broadcast TV is kind of a real niche thing now. It's, it's, everybody's on the cable and satellite. Over the air, they have reception. So this broadcast aspect is getting to be a little niche. And so, so you get people trained, they're gonna be all over the eastern Washington, Washington spots. I, I don't ask that question. I just say, okay.
If I was here, I'd ask it for you.
Okay. I'll see you in the next meeting.
Well, there's four areas that this, and I just think there are four areas we need to focus on. This Northwest Areas Foundation, so they have four grant portfolios. One's access to capital, one's work opportunity, one's enterprise development, and the third one is financial inclusion.
Oh boy, that's, it's many.
So, I mean, really, we actually in this, this region for our economic development need to have those same areas that we work on. We do, but we work on them a bit separately. But there's a lot of people that are working in those areas that are participating throughout. So that's what, that's what this has the opportunity to do. But it should take us beyond the technology that's available to, for TV districts.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if you, if you get a group consistently developed local content.
Yeah.
Then, and, and it has a, it can go to a lot of different directions, tourists.
Yep.
Just like you see now, the advertisements in the publicity, I have a conscious example, uh, that's done by the tourism people. That's, that's a thing that, you know, potentially really many documentaries.
Yep.
Uh, we can talk about, uh, certainly emergency situations, this is a big opportunity to get word out to a different group of people. And, and that's all part of this. And to talk about that, we, we have a emergency now and they don't.
I don't remember that.
Okay.
Actually, we, we have been developing new kinds of emergencies too, you know?
Yeah.
Some that we're not even planned for.
No, no.
Yeah, yeah.
We're going to that one. No, no. And you saw it, the opportunity to get the bigger earthquake.
Oh, there you go.
We'll never know. It'll just be here one day.
That's the one where they say it's not, it's when.
Friend, the tallest, uh, volcanic activity around the world. Man, I'll tell you what. Talk about the old ring of fire.
Oh, yeah.
It's back.
Oh, boy. You know those three big earthquakes last week, out there just like New Zealand.
Yeah.
And all the tsunami that went out as a consequence.
Yeah, they called them all back.
You start, you, you got a earthquake point down here just out of any of that.
Yeah.
Where you exactly.
I got it. Thank you. Thank you for.
Thank you, Stacy. The extra.
Feel free to give me, uh, Jim, a separate question. Do you, is anybody in the Crumbback area get, get, used to get a signal?
You know what that is? I forgot to give your girls an address change for taxes.
Oh, it's in my, it's in a box. I saw your name.
Okay.
This is for, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, do you know if anybody ever got signals from Fox or Olive or Pickens up there?
Uh, most of them's right, White Stone.
White Stone.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. Appreciate it.
We've heard.
But now, isn't there something that's changed on the top of Carter?
I don't know anything about that.
You might ask that question because there's a new antenna of some sort on Carter. That's visible too, right down into Crumbback.
Okay. Okay. Cause, uh, we've heard there's not good service in.
Right.
And so that's something as we build out on Olive, is there a way we can get good service into that area?
Ah.
You know, I don't know.
Yeah. I don't know either.
And so, and we're looking at, is there enough money left over to put in some more satellite translators?
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's being thought about what, if we could, where we would be quick.
I think you'd have to go from Mount Olive to Carter to, you know.
Cause you can't seal that from Carter.
Uh, uh, I don't, you might. You might.
Okay. It's possible that.
Yeah.
Signal will be out there then. So the, the cost of the transmitter goes way down all of a sudden.
Yeah.
You got a direct line of sight.
Yeah.
And the other hurdle is power. And when there's some grant money out there which we're exploring for solar power.
Mm-hmm.
Find works for me, it cuts our cost. We.
Yeah, exactly.
And it's purple urban.
Yeah.
So rather than running a power line up the hill, it's gonna get burned up in the next fire anyhow.
Yeah.
Seems like you should see it from Carter, but I've never been on the side of Carter.
You know what? Neither have I.
I know there's a trail up there.
Yeah, I've been in, around and all over it, but, uh, but, uh.
I flew over it with Mick Albert. I.
Yeah. I mean, I've flown over it.
But you never.
That far off the top of it with Dean Buzzard lots of times, but.
But you don't have any focus on it.
But my memory doesn't tell me that I could actually see O'Mac Mountain some day.
Yeah. It's tricky, you know, on these line of sight things.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Loser.
Thanks, George.
Thank you for your time.
No, thank you for your help.
I always appreciate what you guys did for us.
Better hearing tonight, huh?
Well, at least I, and it's not a debate session, I just get to listen.
That's it. That's, that's right.
And that's, so it's, could be a long night though.
Yeah, well, I was encouraging, um, Pete and, uh, mentioned to Albert, if it's, if it feels grueling, if it feels grueling, you should extend.
Yeah.
Cause you know, I mean, your ability to soak in like.
Yeah, that's true. After a while, it just goes, it goes blah, 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 blah.
Yeah.
People try and say good things, but if we don't, if we can't absorb it, what good is?
Yeah, and that makes them the last ones at a disadvantage.
Yeah.
I mean, if.
And there's always, uh, we're reading already pushback against lack of knowledge and all that.
Yeah, there's a, you know, actually, it's kinda interesting. I walk around and I talk to lots of different people, obviously. I ask them if they know what a comp plan is. Most people are just like, couldn't care less what a comprehensive plan is, you know, and they.
That's why I do this stuff in the world. Like people are, I don't care, don't bug me. I don't know what.
Yeah.
That's kind of the answers I get.
Yeah. So that, when it happens then, what I see happening then is that, that somebody that does know will tell somebody something about it that may or may not be fully right. So.
Everything's that way now.
But I'll tell you what, one thing to, one thing to do is to read the fact that we now have a, a, um, Court of Appeals sent it back to the Superior Court. You know, and we're two years late on it. And I think that we've operated under the old plan for this long.
Oh, yeah.
And we have actually pulled out of development without a comp plan that would say to do that.
Yeah.
So people, people should realize that, you know, it's not a fix-all. And then the zoning part of it has to come after the plan. I'm, I'm sorry, but that's just the way it has to go. Cause.
And, and my, my understanding with each other is just a lot of pressure to build a lot of places right now.
Yeah, there is.
And, uh, going to a moratorium because you've had the comprehensive plan at stage, that's not a very good idea.
Well, that's the problem. And the other part though is the moratoriums themselves aren't, you know, aren't necessarily, I think, use the same necessary.
Yeah.
You, that, all they are is a, a notification because here's the deal. You come in to do a subdivision and you can't, because of Campbell and Glenn, you can't do a subdivision with exempt wells.
Yeah.
That applies all over the county.
Yeah.
And somebody asked me that question the other day. They said, is this gonna come to the Okanagan? And I'm, I said, well, no, this is Meto oriented. But on the other hand, it already, it already exists in the Okanagan.
Yeah.
It's just that people don't realize that that's, you have to water it when you come in to do it.
Yeah, that's, uh, you're trying to complete a wheel or something.
Yeah, exactly. That's exactly right. I haven't actually adjourned. Jim just happened to go out, so you have to.
Well, I don't, I don't wanna be here.
I'm, I'm gonna tell you one thing.
Hey.
Uh, we didn't, um, act on the, um, the, uh.
That's important. I'm sorry that I was not down here.
We could have, but we just decided that, uh, we'll wait and we can address.
Talked about it this afternoon.
Yeah. Yeah. We have a lot of documentation to, to adopt, but.
I'm gonna be sure you're. It's, uh, you're dealing with at that level with their attorney and stuff like that. It just is.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna adjourn.
All right.
For lunch.